Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the August 21st, 2023 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge Allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Mershay. Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kuo.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the City Council Meeting held on July 3rd, 2023. Motion would be in order for the corrected minutes.
So.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the corrected minutes from the City Council Meeting held on July 3rd, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Mershay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuo.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You have before you the minutes of the City Council Meeting held on August 7th, 2023. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second. Who made the motion?
Uh, my idea.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the minutes of the City Council Meeting held on August 7th, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call.
John Mershay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuo.
Abstained.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Mershay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our agenda items under the City Attorney. Our attorney, Mr. Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one item on tonight's agenda for your consideration. It is the approval of a resolution approving a contract for consulting services by and between the City of Crest Hill and Brent Hasser Consulting LLC as discussed in last week's work session. This is an initial three-month contract with Hasser Consulting for management consulting services that are going to be provided by Steve Golden. It is subject to, after the 180 days, an extension of 180 days. So this could be up to six months of services.
I have one question on this. The siphon of 2,500?
Yes.
That's only for a certain period, correct?
That's for the first 180 days. So if it's extended for another 180 days, I think the siphon will be removed.
It doesn't say that, that's all I'm asking. It doesn't say that. At least I did not see it anywhere in the document that it would not renew with the renewal, or that it would be removed. And I think we probably should have that in there.
Subject to that, I can add something to the extension of the 180 days. The Section 3.01b fees will not be part of any extension. Steve, is that okay?
Then I will make a motion with that change.
I have one question about after the second 180-day period transpires, it automatically terminates?
Yes.
And there's no, nothing in there about reopening for any kind of extension?
Obviously, you can re, I mean, we can build in another term, but I think Steve wanted just the two 180 days for now. If we get to the six-month mark after one extension, I think it would be subject to another negotiation of a third or a new contract rather than extending this one. But I.
But it is, as it reads now, it terminates?
Well, it terminates after 180 days unless it's extended for 180 days, at which point it will terminate.
Right.
Second to motion.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert, for a resolution approving contract for consulting services by and between the City of Crest Hill and Brent Hasser Consulting LLC with the corrections as discussed. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Mershay.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1187.
Aside from that, I have nothing else other than have a few questions.
Any questions of City Attorney?
Yeah, Mike, going back a while, we had with 1723, to get the right-of-way in the alley to continue the storm drain there?
Yes.
What do we need to do to continue to pursue that or to get that done?
Other than me physically going to the residence and bringing Mr. Rojas to my office to sign it, or bringing it to him to sign, I don't know what we can do. We have been in contact multiple times with his attorney. I think that he's probably not, since the case is over, the attorney's not getting paid anymore. So the attorney doesn't return the phone calls and answer the emails, other than to say, "I'll pass it on to my client." What my last, my last offer was that we would have somebody from the city bring it to Mr. Rojas. If it's too hard for him to come to my office to sign the document, we'll find somebody to take it to his, his location, wherever, wherever it might be, to get his signature on the, the, the sign off. Aside from that, we keep trying.
There's no way we can just put it in, or any way we can skip that section of the alley and cut through more on the other half and bring it through?
Ron, I don't know whether you're familiar with that, but I, I think that that parcel, we need his, his consent. Otherwise, it's constitutional deprivation. It's a taking under the Fifth Amendment if we do something on that property that belonged to him without the sign off for an easement.
Did you say why he won't sign? Where is concern?
Well, I mean, if we, so, we'll go back to, in addition to, in addition to the flooding problem over there, this is the gentleman that purchased the parcel that has two dwelling units on the one parcel. Parcel is not big enough for two parcels under our zoning code. So we had to file suit against him. He claimed that our, it's called the sunset provision of our code that says, once there's a transfer of ownership, you're no longer grandfathered in. You, you have no further rights that your prior owner had. He said that that was unconstitutional and said, "I'm going to continue to rent both, both dwellings." City had to file suit to enforce our ordinance. Judge Anderson agreed with us that the ordinance was constitutional. As part of the wrap-up of that, he tried to hold us up for some money to sign the document for the, the project. And the city refused. We said, "We're keeping these two suits separate. The, the project is the project. The lawsuit is the lawsuit. We won the lawsuit. You need to get the tenant out of the one dwelling. We need to cap the sewer, cap the water, disconnect all the services. You can use that for, you know, a garage or storage, but you can't use it for a dwelling." So we've kept them separate. I don't know whether he's harboring any kind of animosity because he lost the lawsuit and that's why he's dragging his feet. I mean, but the law, both lawsuits are over. His lawyer has said, you know, "Go sign this because it's going to help you and your neighbors because once this project's done, it's going to alleviate the flooding." But that's where we're at.
I was just wondering if anyone from the city had an actual conversation. You don't sit down and try and address those concerns?
Well, since, since, since his lawyer has not told me that he doesn't represent him anymore, I ethically can't talk to the client. Somebody from the city can reach out. I know Mark Seifer, before he left, had asked, you know, "What can I do?" And at that time, the lawyer was still representing him. So I had to go through the lawyer. And that's where I still go through until the lawyer tells me, "Look, I don't represent him anymore. He's not responding to my calls, or he's not, he's not being responsive to me." But that doesn't prevent somebody from the city. So I don't know whether Blaine or Ron wants to try to reach out to Mr. Rojas directly and say, "Look, we've got this document. Can you come and sign it?" But, you know, that's a possibility. I just, it's been sitting in my office now for months and months and months. And I keep being told that he's going to come over. So, you know, it's, we have word at our front desk that if this fellow shows up, that even if I'm not there, or Mike Sanchi's not there, my staff knows where this document is in my office, that if he comes in, they bring it to the front and they know where to tell him to sign. But like I said, the last salvo was to the lawyer, "Hey, look, you know, if he schedules a time, we'll come to him. I'll send somebody from the city over with the document and we'll just bring it to him. All he needs to do is sign. We'll make it as convenient as possible for him."
I know he was wanting monetary money for his portion or whatever supposedly because the alleys are owned by everybody on that block, those two streets there.
And, and yeah, he, he, when, when all his neighbors signed off on the agreement and said, "We'll give you the right-of-way," he said, "No, I want money."
Right.
And the city, obviously, we felt, if we pay him money, then why would the neighbors not want to be paid as well?
Exactly.
This is a project that benefits everybody. So, you know, we took the position that we weren't going to be, you know, I mean, we don't have to do this project. This project will help the flooding in that area, but it's not something that, you know, the city has to do. But we budgeted for it. We've done the engineering for it. The city stands willing and ready to do it. But until we get the right-of-way, he can effectively hold up the project.
All right.
No, there's no process of using eminent domain by the city?
Well, we, we have eminent domain power, but that would be costly and time-consuming by the time we, we don't have, I, I don't believe we have quick-take authority for this. So it would have to go through the process. And with eminent domain, you have to compensate. I mean, you're taking, the government can take the property, but then you have to pay just compensation. So we'd have to pay everybody for this. And I don't think the city wants to spend the time and the resources to condemn only to have to pay everybody some, let some court determine to be a just compensation. But the short answer is, we're trying. I mean, we're still trying. And may, maybe I'll coordinate with, like I said, Blaine or Ron, and maybe you guys could reach out him directly.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead and, you go ahead and coordinate with me. I can reach out to him. I know Mark's last conversations were very unsuccessful. He was standing on money, money. So, and that's, that's where it stood. But, I mean, I don't, again, I could maybe take a look. Maybe we can, I don't know, maybe there's, maybe there's another option. One just popped into my head. I can maybe talk to you about later.
Because I don't think, I, I don't know where, I don't know whether we have an actual home address for him because obviously, he doesn't live in any of these properties. He's like a manager. He buys the properties and then rents them through his management company.
All right.
Just a, a quick question or comment regarding the resolution that we just passed. Is there a way we can bring Mr. Golden to the podium so we can present him to the regular?
I was going to do that as soon as the questions were done. City Council?
Oh, because we move to the next, okay.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Steve Golden is in the audience. Steve, I'd like to welcome you back to the City of Crest Hill. We've been friends, friends for a long time, and I believe that you are going to bring us a wealth of experience and knowledge to the city. So the podium is yours.
Oh, no, just thank you. I look forward to working with the council and the mayor and staff. And as I've always said, I think Crest Hill has great possibilities. There's to be a great blank slate here and a great blank canvas that we can paint a really nice community and an upgraded community and work with you all to get to where everybody wants to be. So I look forward to the, the next several months.
I think you get your first job assignment by calling Mr. Rojas.
If you need me to make cookies, you just let me know. I will.
The one, I also, you know, I, I, the one thing I was, was, is there any type of Ron or Mike, any type of emergency because the flooding could be a hazard? Is there any type of legal standing with that type of?
There's more than one thing going on here than the flooding. There's also an existing storm sewer that runs adjacent and under real close to people's homes that was installed prior to Crest Hill being there. So.
There's no easements?
There's no easement. So the whole point of the project was, as, as Mike said, was to eliminate that pipe by putting the storm sewer in, in, in our public right-of-way. But we needed to tie in to a structure that's in the alley. We have to cross this gentleman's property. But I did, I just thought of something as we were sitting here that I was, I can bring your attention to Mike's.
Emergency powers or any type of health and safety, welfare-type issues that you might be able to present to a judge or something? I don't know.
Well, and I don't think the flo, I mean, the flooding does not occur except in like exceptional rain events. It's not like it floods every time we get rain. So.
Health, safety type thing.
But.
If he lost in court, can the judge with him in, like, contempt court?
Well, you have to have a court case pending. I mean, there, there's got to be some pending matter before the judge, before a judge can hold somebody in contempt for not following an order. Both of the cases that we were involved in with this gentleman are done. They're no longer, they've been dismissed. So we would have to initiate some sort of action to get the case back in front of a judge. And I don't know what that action would be right at the moment.
Other than eminent domain?
Oh, I mean, but.
Yeah, other than that.
But, right, I mean, we can file him. But then again, we're seeking to condemn all of that property.
In your two years.
Or at least his property. And then he's going to say, "Pay me my just compensation," which is what he wants.
And you're probably two years in court.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, since we're going to different subjects in here in the same time.
I'm sorry.
No, I just want to welcome you again.
Thank you.
And I look forward to work with you. And hopefully, you can move us forward and show some leadership in the city. And hopefully, we can open doors to more hiring and looking forward to work with you. Maybe you can start by removing those, the trees right there. I keep looking at them. You see them?
I was on my list to talk to Blaine about getting new trees out of there at Memorial. That's on my list.
It's already been discussed.
All right, good.
Your first day is Tuesday, August 29th, correct?
Actually, I'm coming tomorrow. I'm going to come in tomorrow for a little bit. I know I talked, when I talked initially, it was the 29th. I'm going to come tomorrow a little bit. We have some meetings on Thursday with, uh, the Division Street Project with West Point Builders. And then we also have a meeting with the Kabinsky Property, potential developer of the Kabinsky Properties. So I'm going to come to those meetings on Thursday.
Okay. Very good.
Well, welcome back, sir. And I look forward to many more long conversations as you drive aimlessly around the city.
Yeah, that's right. Eight o'clock at night, right? Just driving around, right? Well, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Public Works Department. Agenda item number five, approval of pay request number seven from Viscerine Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the IAPA for approval and dispersment for a total of $1,709,390.74. There is a lot of information in your packet. This is from Blaine Klein. However, he could not be here this evening. So this is normal course of procedure for projects of this size as we move forward. So I would ask for a motion for, for approval.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have all the, motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for approval of pay request number seven from Viscerine Construction Incorporated with a direction to send it to the IAPA for approval and dispersment for a total of $1,709,390.74. This is for the West Sewage Plant Rehabilitation. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Mershay.
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, Blaine will be back tomorrow if you have any questions of him. Next on the agenda is for City Engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items on the agenda tonight. The first, I'm looking for a motion to execute a professional services agreement with Strand and Associates to perform design engineering service and bid con, bid contract documents, Contract One, for the US-30 from Lyness Lane to Theodore, Theodore from US-30 to Broadway, and Broadway Street from Theodore to Cheney Water Main Lining Project for not exceed amount of $396,100.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this was discussed last Monday night at the work session. We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to execute a professional service agreement with Strand and Associates to perform design engineering services and bid document preparation.
Second was John.
Second was John.
Second was Alderman Mershay. My fault. Design Engineering Services and bid document preparation for Contract One for Route 30 from Lyness Lane to Theodore and Theodore from Route 30 to Broadway, and then Broadway from Theodore to Cheney for Water Main Lining Project not to exceed the amount of $396,100. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Mershay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is looking for a motion to approve change order one with Sheridan Plumbing and Sewer for the US-30, the US Route 30 Water Main Lining Project, which will reduce the contract amount by $226,280.8. Again, this was presented at the last workshop.
So moved, just presented. Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal to approve a change order number one with Sheridan Plumbing and Sewer for Route 30 Water Main Lining Project, which will reduce the contract amount by $226,280.8. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Mershay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And that's all I have. Unless there's any other questions, my counsel?
Any questions of City Engineer? All right, thanks, Ron. Moving on to Community Development. Our Building Commissioner is here this evening, Mr. Don Seaman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have, looking for approval for Donald E. Morris Architects as the new plan review and inspection services for the Building Department.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Again, this was discussed last Monday night. Also, we have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for approval of Donald E. Morris Architects as the new plan review and inspection service for the City of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kuo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Mershay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, I have approval for the purchase of three iPads for the Building Department. And I do have, the plan for Verizon is locked in. There won't be a change. After one year, if we want to upgrade, we're qualified as an upgrade as a government account. So we can upgrade at that time. Otherwise, it'll stay at the fee that we have per month.
Thank you. So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval of the purchase of three iPads for the Building Department. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Mershay.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions of Building Department? All right, thanks, Don. Moving on to the Police Department. Our Police Chief, Ed Clark. And we do have two special guests in the audience this evening.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to thank you all for, again, support, support the Police Department and our endeavors in increasing our manpower on the street. I have with us this evening two of our latest hires. I have a 23-year-old, Brett Williams from Joliet, and I have 31-year-old, Kyle Vonderheide from Minooka. And these gentlemen have passed all the testing, all the background, everything that's required. And they're ready to go to the academy on the 28th. So they'll go, we just got two from the academy. We'll put two back in. So thank you again for your support. And I'll let these gentlemen come up and introduce themselves.
Thank you. Like you said, my name is Brett Williams, and I am honored and excited to work alongside the Crest Hill Police Department and work alongside with you, fellow councilmen.
Kyle Vonderheide, I'm just going to second off that. I just want to thank you guys for your opportunity. I'm very excited to be working for the, for the city and the Police Department. Thank you, guys.
Well, welcome, gentlemen, both of you.
Kyle and, Kyle and Brett, welcome again to the City of Crest Hill. Hope you have a long career with us. Like I told you, after we got sworn in, that you're representing the City of Crest Hill on everybody's bad days. So you're going to give the first impression sometimes as a police officer and as a city of how you react to them, treat everybody with respect, certainly take advantage of all the training that the city will have to offer to you. Take advantage of the older police officers for the experience that they have and the knowledge that they have also. And we wish you a very safe and healthy stay with the City of Crest Hill, and hopefully you'll move right up the ranks as you go along in your career. So welcome to the City of Crest Hill. Stay safe. Anybody else?
Yeah, welcome to the City of Crest Hill. All you got to do is stay here 20 years, that's all.
Well, welcome you again. As I spoke to you earlier, we wish you a very long career in the City of Crest Hill, and may God keep you safe. That's the most important thing. Thanks for our courage to become a police officer right now. Thank you.
And this is number 30, brings us back to number 31 and 32, correct? That's correct, ma'am. And we're going to hire two more to bring us back up to the 34 level. Yep. So, congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ed?
That's all I have this evening. Your packets were included in the reports, and I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions of Police Chief?
Yes, Chief. I just would like an update since February 15. I requested some stop signs of the strip mall by one week where Prusad is. And I know, this, I know. Which, which side do you want to go, this way or this way?
That doesn't matter.
We have this in our face. I apologize. Let me get closer to the mic so I can speak with you. So anyway, I would like an update. This has been going on for way too long since February, and the residents are very, getting frustrated because it's very dangerous there, especially right now since we have many businesses. They're very active over there. So can you please give us an update? Or is the attorney's going to take time to figure? I know he's really busy lately.
I know we've worked on and off, on it, but I'm waiting right now. Roger Chavez from Caton Commercial is going to get back to me. He, he had not gotten back to me about the group purchasing the stop signs or paying the city for us to put them in. I don't know how that's going to work. We're going to work through that. And then we'll get those two si, stop signs put in. But that kind of gave me a little kick in the shorts to get this done. So I'll, I'll go ahead and take care of that this week as quickly as I can, and I'll update you on that.
Is there a way we can send them, like a certified letter or something? Because right now, safety is more important than anything. So if they're not returning?
No, I, I had met, I had met him out there.
Okay.
And I'll meet him out there again. And I'll, I'll physically meet with him and get that, get that going.
All right, thank you.
Again, yeah.
Kyle and, Kyle and Brett, welcome again, um, to the city of Crest Hill. Hope you have a long career with us. Like I told you, after we got sworn in, that you're representing the city of Crest Hill on everybody's bad days. So you're gonna give the first impression sometimes as a police officer and as a city of how you react to them, treat everybody with respect, certainly take advantage of all the training that the city will have to offer to you. Take advantage of the older police officers for the experience that they have and the knowledge that they have also. And we wish you a very safe and healthy stay with the city of Crest Hill, and hopefully you'll move right up the ranks as you go along in your career. So welcome to the city of Crest Hill. Stay safe. Anybody else?
Yeah, welcome to the city of Crest Hill. All you gotta do is spend here twenty years, that's all.
Well, when I'm welcoming again, as I spoke to you earlier, we wish you a very long career in Crest Hill, and may God keep you safe. That's the most important, and takes a lot of courage to become a police officer right now. Thank you.
And this is number thirty, brings us back to number thirty-one and thirty-two, correct?
That's correct.
And we're gonna hire two more to bring us back up to the thirty-four level.
Yep.
So, congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ed?
That's all I have this evening. Uh, your packets were included in the, uh, reports, and I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions of police chief?
Yes, Chief, I just would like an update since February fifteen, I requested some stop signs of, uh, the strip mall by runway where, uh, Crusade, um, is, and, uh, I know, this, I know. Which, which side do you wanna go, this way or this way?
That doesn't matter.
We have this in our face, I apologize. Let me get closer to him, so I can speak. So anyway, um, I would like an update, this has been going on for way too long since February, and the residents are very, getting frustrated because it's very dangerous there, especially right now, since we have, uh, many businesses, they're very active over there. Uh, so can you please give us an update, or is the attorney's gonna take time to figure? I know he's really busy lately.
I know we've worked, uh, on and off, on it, but, uh, I'm waiting right now. Roger Chavez from Caton Commercial is gonna get back to me. He, he had not gotten back to me about, uh, the group purchasing the stop signs or paying the city for us to put them in. I don't know how that's gonna work. We're gonna work through that, and then we'll get those two si, stop signs put in. But, uh, that kinda gave me a little kick in the shorts to get this done, so I'll, uh, I'll go ahead and take care of that this week as quickly as I can, and I'll update you on that.
Is there a way we can send them, like a certified letter or something? Cause right now, safety is more important than anything, so if they're not returning, uh?
No, I, I had met, I had met him out there.
Okay.
Um, and I'll meet him out there again, and I'll, I'll physically meet with him and get that, get that going.
All right, thank you.
Again, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on, the mayor's report. I do not have any agenda items this evening, if anybody has any questions.
Yes, Mayor, um, would like to, as for our conversation last night, um, about the event that you'll be hosting in October twenty-first, the Brooklyn Currents, can we have the sunny agenda for next Monday? So the rest of the council here, uh, be part of the discussion and be part of this big celebration of this building.
Absolutely. As I sent out the save the date to city council, uh, on August fifteenth, I told everybody to save the date. We are in the infancy stages. We do wanna have a open house here to give tours of this building, both the police department and the city hall side. We are proud of what we have created here, and I hope that our residents are proud of what we have created here, and they certainly have a right to see the inside of this building. So, we've been here for five months now, since we moved in on May fourth. We're still two months out. We are in the infancy stages of planning everything. Uh, city staff has been informed, and they're gonna be doing most of the work for the open house. But we do have to have a lot of discussions going forward, so we can certainly have it on the work session for next Monday night.
Well, I appreciate that, and I agree with the part that the resident need to see what we spend money on. Um, so I hope this will be a discussion to the rest of the council, cause there's eight elected officials here as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? Moving on to the city clerk's report, our city clerk, Christine Burchett Hall.
Thank you so much. Um, the only thing I have to report is, um, last weekend, we did have the citywide garage sale, and we had probably around fifty participants this time. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, questions of city clerk?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, moving on, city treasurer, support our treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I seek your approval on our list of bills through August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of six hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and nine cents.
So moved, just presented.
Second. We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Burchett?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all. The only other item I have is strictly informational, like to report our regular overtime payroll from July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, through August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. That's all I have for this evening, unless anyone has any questions.
Questions of city treasurer? All right, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Uh, unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business? Committee liaison reports, anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? We'll begin with Alderman Kubal tonight.
Nothing to add at this time, sir.
Alderman Albert?
Uh, yes, Mayor, one final plug here for the Crest Hill Lions Luau. On Sunday, September third, there's a, uh, a lot of fun activities planned throughout the day, including a car show, craft vendor fair, bingo, kids' activities, um, live entertainment all day. So, hope you can make it out. It runs from noon to ten PM at St. Joe's Park on Theodore Street on Sunday, September third.
Alderman Sepiti?
I just wanted to, uh, congratulate our two newest officers and, uh, welcome you to the city and hope you have a long and safe career.
Thank you.
Alder Person Overland?
Well, I would also like to congratulate you and welcome, and welcome Mr. with all the honors to, let's not forget him. And, uh, wish everybody a very nice, safe, and happy family oriented Labor Day.
Alderman Gazal?
No comments.
Alderman Jefferson?
Oh, yes, I'd like to just welcome the two new recruits, uh, to the force and wish you a long and productive career. Welcome back, Steve, and, um, looking forward to working with you guys.
Alderman Burchett?
Uh, nothing to do this time.
Alderman Dyke?
Just wanna welcome you guys to police department and to the city, and hope you have a long and safe career here.
Okay, public comment. Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional.
My name's McKenzie, and then, uh, seven, seven hundred block, good painter. I actually have a...
Your last name, McKenzie?
Reinhardt.
Reinhardt, okay.
Um, something for the chief, um, I've had, um, some, quite a few problems with